Where's Dave? Dave?
Yeah, we don't need him.
Oh, there he is.
Yeah, we don't need you.
Dave? Dave's not here.
He's up first.
I am!
You are up?
Oh.
They already did the pledge.
Yeah. I apologize, Steve.
No, 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 not at all. You've not ever let me hold up government.
We need to watch him take the pledge real quick.
Yeah. I do it myself. Okay. I'm reporting on items I approved on February seventh and February twelfth. February seventh, I approved the liquor license on your behalf during with Bainbridge Township trustees and not requesting a hearing on the liquor license requested by Chirin Cinemas LLC, located eight two hundred East Washington Street, Bainbridge, Ohio, permit number C N E W one four one four zero five nine. Water Resources, on that day, I approved and executed two service contracts on your behalf. National Pump and Process Incorporated performed pump maintenance at various wastewater facilities within the department for a two-year period, eighteen and nineteen, in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars, five thousand dollars a year. North Shore Pump and Equipment Company performed pump maintenance within the department for a two-year period, eighteen and nineteen, in an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars per year. On February twelve, I, on behalf of Water Resources, approved and executed three service contracts, contract agreements for you. Vine Court Landscaping and Gas Line Services performed excavating and landscaping services at various locations within the department for a two-year period, eighteen, nineteen, in an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred a year. McDonald Equipment Company performed generator services and repairs at various water locations within the department for a three-year period, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, in an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars, two thousand dollars a year. Also McDonald Equipment Company performed generator services and repairs at various wastewater locations within the department for a three-year period, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, in an amount not to exceed four thousand or five thousand dollars a year. Finally, for Maintenance Department, on your behalf, I approved and executed a service contract agreement with Young Investments Incorporated, D P A, Yoar Supplies, performed door installations and maintenance services as needed for Joga County buildings for a two-year period, eighteen and nineteen, in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. I asked Glenn about this one because I've never heard of these guys. They're kind of a form, they came out of a different company, some of the same principles, and their rate per hour was much lower than the others had quoted in this job.
All right. Think real quick, liquor license, when they waived not to have a hearing, I mean, so they can decide just they don't want to do a hearing, or, you know, I've seen a bunch of those come through.
Yeah, that's what I mean, they always give the local township and the county the ability to, if you want to have a hearing, say if there's an issue or if further there's been issues, say if law enforcement says there's been an issue, you can have a hearing and kind of let the public weigh in as to whether that might be a problem.
But they can decide, the trustees decide not to have a hearing?
Correct. And then we typically, this office typically files a legal township. Again, it's the Department of Liquor Control that actually decides if it's licensed.
Okay.
The localities have it right now.
Okay.
We actually had one in Chesterland, just.
Okay.
It hasn't happened yet. We talked about doing the hearing for the one in Chesterland, and they've got, they got canceled.
Oh, yeah, we never did. We talked about it, yes.
The one, we have two right now that we're waiting to hear from Division of Liquor Control, and that would be for Oso and Handen, and that probably won't happen until the spring because they have to start construction. And then the other one is the one that they huge just agreed to a hearing for with Clarvis Township on another dollar gemma.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay, the financials for today include revenue certifications for the probate court and transit. There are appropriation transfer for the Commissioner's Office, transferring from operating transfers out to legal fees, supplemental appropriations from Transit for their computer software services account, and also from the Engineer's Office for various operations accounts they've supplemented to various accounts. There's cash transfers from the General Fund to the Engineer's Office for the tax map. Funding per memo of understanding dated twelve five thirteen, Stormwater Management Fund, per M O U dated four thirty thirteen, and two thousand eighteen Payment of Office Expenses per Funding Agreement Allowed by O R C three one five point one one. Cash transfer from the General Fund to the Auditor's R E A F Fund for tax map funding for M O U dated twelve five thirteen. Cash transfer from the General Fund to the Sheriff's Office for a portion of their two thousand eighteen funding for the nine-one-one operations. Cash transfer from the General Fund to the Care and Custody Fund for grant amounts not yet received. When the grant money is received, we pay back the General Fund or by twelve thirty-one eighteen at the latest. Cash transfer from the General Fund as well as various other funds for the two thousand, January two thousand eighteen Windstream invoice. Among the encumbrances are then and now from the Commissioner's Office for McGlinchey, Stafford for Special Prosecutor Legal Expenses, travel requests from Community Development for Kelly Conrad to attend the Ohio Economic Development Institute training on real estate development in Dublin, Ohio. Travel requests from Emergency Services for Austin Rice and Thomas Denzel to attend a Fundamentals of Grant Management course in Columbus, and Roger Peterson to attend Emergency Management Association of Ohio's Spring Conference in Dublin, Ohio. Travel requests from County Engineer for Nick Horace to attend two thousand eighteen Ohio Stormwater Management and Drainage Conference in Columbus. And travel requests from J F S for Kim Mullitt to attend Ohio Job and Family Services Fiscal Certification Programs in Columbus during March of two thousand eighteen, and Ashley Hiscox to attend the Ohio Council on Welfare Fraud Training Conference in Mount Exeter, Ohio. Also a then and now certificate from the Sheriff's Office to U H S Geogga for inmate medical bills, and encumbrance from Water Resources for Lake Business Products for three copiers at the Merritt Road Garage, New Farland Wastewater Treatment Plant, and the lab. Among the vouchers are eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars from the Commissioner's Office to the City of Chardon for our share of the first quarter two thousand eighteen Assistant Prosecutor for the Police Department, and also forty-seven thousand one hundred and six dollars and seven cents from the Engineer's Office to Cargill Salt Division for additional road salt, and twenty-six thousand nine oh seven sixty-five to Centerra Co-op.
How much did you say for the engineers for the salt?
Forty-seven thousand one oh six oh seven.
And I'm trying to look for it here, so that in the, so this, so the, on the nine-one-one operations, was that for the server, or how much was that for?
No, 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 this was just our share of their.
Funding the operation, so the General Fund helps support like the staffing.
Okay.
And the nine-one-one fund gets money from that charge everybody pays on the phone bill, but we have to supplement on the General Fund.
And then what was this, what was then and now from the Commissioner's Office for McGlinley, it's not for Special Prosecutor Legal Expense?
That is in regards to the investigation into the embezzlement that happened over at the A D P office.
Okay, so this is going to be for, for the, for the Special Prosecutor involved in that investigation?
Yeah, and there were some bills that were actually generated prior to us having the encumbrance in place just based on when we were notified.
And that amount was how much?
The, we had a carryover that we used to pay seven hundred and ten dollars that happened in two thousand seventeen. The costs during January were the ones that we didn't have an encumbrance in place for, and that was a little over twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
It's like twenty-two.
So, last week, I think I asked the same question, and I was, if I remember correctly, it was told, we were, we had not received any invoices yet, correct?
Right, we had not. We were just kind of giving a heads up, hey, these are coming. So I asked Adrian to get, you know, getting purchase orders in place, encumbrances in place, it could be increased.
I see, okay.
Once we saw the actual amount.
So, okay.
There were some that came in with invoice dates prior to us having that encumbrance, so now you got to do a then and now.
Yeah, so the then and now, I was incorrect, twenty thousand two fifty-five thirty, that was in the encumbrances.
Okay. So, can we ask the question of the prosecutor, find out what the hourway is for this return? And I'd like to, we talked about this, I think, last week, maybe the week before, and finding out if we've got any kind of an idea how much this is going to be. We ought to be understanding what the budget should be for this going forward, whether we establish a formal budget or not, but at least understand what we're going to be paying over the terms, we're not shocked or surprised by some number, so we have probably.
On the current invoice that we have, there's, there's two lawyers. One was like about a hundred and seventy dollars an hour, one was like three fifty-five.
I think that's Bryant Costura is the lead, he's at the three hundred.
Yeah, that's pretty stiff for.
I guess my only concern or question would be, you know, do we have any goalposts here? You know, is this thing just a open checkbook, or until it's solved, or, you know, I guess, is there a budget, or not?
Yeah, well, I will talk to the prosecutor, just so you want to confirm, you know, if he has any idea at this point. Initially, when I talked to him, since he's given us the potential scope, we're just trying to say. But hopefully, they're far enough along, they should have some kind of idea.
See the light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah, we're going to see the light at the end of the tunnel.
No, that's, I mean, listen, you're doing a good job with this, Adrian, I just wanted to double check. And then the only other question was, is on this, this, for Water Resources, and with your background, permits and fees, is, you know, all of these hundred dollar charges, is that for all of the plants?
Yeah, those are all the annual permits that we pay the E P A for, to renew.
Okay.
So there's, there's ones where it's just like, you know, just renewing the license, and then there's one that they go through where there's a much larger process, and it's a larger fee as well because they reevaluate the plant and do stuff like that, so.
Okay.
But those, all those hundred dollar ones are just the normal yearly renewals that we go through, just like your tags on your, on your car.
Which is unfortunate because, I mean, the E P A is pretty much subsidized by tax person, and they're paying them fees on top of it again, which is just, you know what I mean, it's just a.
Yeah, they're, it's amazing how many fees there are for the different things that they have to do over there.
Yeah.
Just to get a permit to install, to do changes and stuff on a plant that they have to review, and then they charge us. But, you know, there's a lot of fees, a lot of charges that go for just about everything.
And I've always said that even when the auditors come in from the state of Ohio, we got to pay beaucoup bucks for that, and it's like, really?
Yeah, thirty grand for them to commit an audit.
Well, it's more than that, I think, isn't it? It's closer towards, I think, fifty or sixty.
Oh, that, oh, geez, the overall audit every year, because it includes G F S, that made a jump. G F S used to have their own audit, we announced them, I think it's closer to ninety dollars.
And we're paying for something.
And we're paying a salary.
Yeah.
Well, you'll have the opportunity to talk to them about it, to talk to them about it at the end of the month.
Right.
Yeah.
The pre-agreement is for twenty-seven.
And I, and I get it, but, you know, it's, and obviously, it's not going to be a finger-pointing contest, but we paid them all that money, if you paid somebody to come and check your plumbing, and they didn't find it, would you pay them to come back?
Right, I mean, what are they looking for, is my question, you know?
Well, they're looking for regularities, and, you know, the county, in the last about twenty years, they've started to offer the alternative, go hire a public accounting firm to do it for you. But now it's kind of a matter of, you know, if the state does it, you know, there's not going to be any questions. If you have somebody on the outside, will that, will that cause additional questions?
Yeah, and I'm not necessarily saying, my frustration is, is could they have caught some of the stuff that had gone on in the auditor's office, you know?
Well, because, and their answer would be, well, we only look at certain things, we focus on certain things, we're testing certain things, we don't look at everything every year. I mean, it's the same question people have with the Chester situation.
Yeah.
A four million dollars disappeared, why wasn't that caught? Well, it wasn't, what was being done there wasn't being really looked at.
What would be interesting though is if they actually, if they actually took, you know, took that specifically, that department, and were actually, that they actually did a, you know, an overview of what their performance on, you know, of that, you know?
Well, that's what that forensic audit that we're paying bills on, they're kind of doing that after the fact now.
But I'm saying is, the auditors actually had selected them, because every year they're changing who they pick, you know? They're picking this part, they're picking this guy, they're picking this guy. So it's like, over the last three years that we've been paying for this, did they, did they review that and missed it?
Yeah.
And if they did, then, then who should be liable to as far as their fees?
Yes.
We paid for something that we didn't get.
That would be a very good thing to bring on for the three auditors.
Yeah, well, why wasn't that caught, and what can they do differently to catch you in the future?
Yeah.
Well, there are other, be certain fundamental things that an auditor looks at every time. And this particular situation was the most common scam there is.
Yeah, there was lots of red flags.
If the auditors aren't checking this scam every time they come in here.
And here's the problem that I have with this, it's like, you know, we kind of like have the ability of, where we've got twenty thousand dollars, I get it, these people are, you know, working on this case and it's needed and required, but, but, you know, what this continues to cost? And look at how much time that they could be spending on other stuff.
Absolutely.
So it's like you, the number just keeps on ticking up, and it's like, at the end of the day, this is, you know, whatever you think the dollar value is, it's a whole lot higher.
I mean, besides the amount embezzled, and then what we're going to have to put into, you know, solving it and then cleaning it up, it's going to be a hundred.
Yeah, we're not tracking the salaries of all the people involved.
Right.
Just our conversation here today. What's that costing?
Anyway.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve, execute Resolution Number eighteen dash fourteen, item number financials for the meeting of Director thirteen, two thousand eighteen.
Second?
Commissioner Plaigle?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes. I. I'd like to second Commissioner Spilleri's compliments of the great job you did, you've been in here and all the detail and efforts you're putting in.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's been a flawless change, to be honest with you, it's really been, been nice, it's been great to have you on board.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
And we're great tasting water on top of all that.
And the staff here too, and all of you as well, you make it easy to do the job, so, not that it's that easy, but. I don't want to make it sound like it's too easy, but, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so we've got.
County Auditors requesting the board accept, execute and file the monthly statement of county finances filed by the County Auditor for the month of January two thousand eighteen pursuant to O R C three one nine point one five. The County Treasurer requesting the board accept, execute and file the monthly statement of county finances filed by the County Treasurer for the month of January two thousand eighteen pursuant to O R C three one nine point one five.
Second?
Commissioner Plaigle?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Spilleri.
Need to put one of those shock collars on skin.
Yeah.
I just look at him, and I'm like waiting.
Get with the program.
You got one of those for your dog.
I do.
Bring it over here next Tuesday.
Or a bark collar.
No appreciation.
You'll figure this out.
Good morning.
Morning. Just need more of your.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I have a transportation agreement between our agency and Geogga Transit for services for transportation for seniors to come to the Senior Center, and more specifically, our Adult Day Program, which is a program with individuals with memory issues, Alzheimer's, or dementia. The vast majority of the funds that we will be paying is subsidized through our Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging Grant, so. Our price went down from last year, it was over three dollars per mile, now it's down to two ninety-five, Mike does that calculation each year, so.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve and execute the transportation services between the Joga County Transit and the Department on Aging to provide transportation services for Joga County seniors aged sixteen and over attending the Senior Center and Adult Day Service Programs for the period February first, two thousand eighteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of two dollars ninety-five cents per mile for services excluding outings, and three dollars per mile for outings if scheduling conflicts.
Move. Second?
Commissioner Plaigle? Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Spilleri?
Good afternoon.
Morning.
Hi, Kelly.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you want to do the resolution and the agreement separately?
I think we can. Yeah, that sounds good.
The first one that I have is request for the board to agree on the, go through the resolution for the C R A agreement between the Joga County Commissioners and Old State Road Properties on the expansion of their building, the old Chaytree Building. They will be doing an expansion on that, and so now we're going to be able to put them in the C R A agreement just for that eleven thousand square foot expansion, whatnot for the whole building, they'll be getting a, the C R A on that.
What do they do again, is it packaging or something?
They work a lot with, crap, and Maco, or not Maco, Masco.
Masco.
And so they're adding two huge new project lines, and they're already starting it, so they have their warehouse hack that they have now, so they're expanding that building out eleven thousand square feet, continue that project, they were actually, I was talking to Louis the other day, and he actually has to turn down work right now.
Is that right? Oh, good, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a really, really good thing.
Good to hear. Okay.
So, two, six, and seven. Community Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number eighteen dash fifteen in authorizing the execution of the Burton Township Community Reinvestment Area Agreement between the Joga County Board Commissioners and one fifty-three thirty-two Old State Road Properties LLC backslash B A A Land Management LLC. The Community Economic Development Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of Board to execute a Community Reinvestment Area Agreement between the Joga County Board Commissioners and one fifty-three thirty-two Old State Road Properties LLC, B A A Land Management LLC, regarding the expansion project located at one fifty-one forty-one Kingston Road, Burton Township.
Second?
Commissioner Plaigle? Mr. Lynn?
Yes. Back.
The next one is to approve and execute a subordination agreement between Erie Bank with B A A Land Management, which is also the Old State Road Properties. We did a loan for them last year, and the bank is just now coming on board because they're getting ready to build the expansion part. So we obviously placed our mortgage immediately, and once we've agreed on the loan agreement, so we have our place, and we expected we would, we knew we were going to subordinate to the bank, we're going to be in third place.
So, we're in third?
Yes, we will be, and.
We're always in third.
It depends on who's, who's in the mix. Sometimes you'll have the bank, S B A, or usually S B A gets first, and usually won't subordinate. And at the beginning of this deal, S B A told us they would subordinate, and now they're not. So the bank is going to consolidate their one loan that they've already had with this company, pay off S B A, so the positions were changed a little bit then, but it doesn't hurt us in any way. It was also going to be in the, in the place that we knew we would be at the beginning of the deal.
Okay.
Which company was this?
This is Third Dimension still, yeah.
Yeah, and they're, you know, obviously they're a sound, sound company.
Oh, they're, yeah, yeah, their numbers are excellent.
Okay.
Community Economic Development Office is requesting the board approve and execute the subordination agreement real estate borders with Erie Bank and Division of C and B Bank in regards to the revolver loan combo to one fifty-three thirty-two Old State Road Properties LLC, B A A Land Management LLC, S B A A Land Management LLC, is will be obtaining an additional loan in the amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and refinancing a current loan in the amount of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
Just a quick question, so they're refinancing a current loan that they have with us already?
No, the bank has with their, with S B A land, yeah.
So that's not, that's not when they are currently with the county?
No, the one we, yeah, the one they have with our county right now, and we're actually still dispersing on it, so, because the project, we're paying for machinery and equipment, we're not in on the, on the building part because that would kick in for the only wage, and, you know, that's a whole new ballgame.
And what's, so what's the total dollar amount we've got with?
The total new project part of it is six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
The county's in.
Our county estimate is a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
We have a mortgage in place for one hundred thousand dollars, and that will be, that's in the fourth place.
Okay. So can I, do I have a motion?
Second?
Commissioner Plaigle? Mr. Lynn?
Yes. I, what, just curious, what's the interest rate right now on these loans?
I believe ours is three percent, and I believe the banks, we go, usually tend to go along with the bank. I think we're all about three percent right now, I think maybe three point five on the two.
That's very, very low, very low.
Yeah, and that's why we.
I don't know a bank that would give you three percent right now. Find them for, if I can find one, I'd be interested in talking to them.
I don't know what the refinanced one is, the one that they had prior to this, but I'm like, the one that they're doing with us is, I believe, three point five percent, for the four seventy-five.
And what's the, I'm sorry to ask so many questions, but what, how, what's the term on that?
Um, ours will be, the larger loans with the banks are usually twenty years. Ours will be five to seven years because it's equipment.
Okay.
We, we, the state won't allow, so normally we want to go twenty years at a hundred thousand dollars, so.
Good. Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I like to get a whole bunch of money for, for two million dollars.
There's a copy attached to that.
Okay.
Yeah, we could do all three of these together.
These are for the Keston Service Unit, for the Girl Scout troops. They have two gold awards, one troops earned their silver award, and one earned their bronze award. They are doing their ceremony on Sunday, February twenty-fifth, at one o'clock at Tillman's Elementary School. If any of you are able to attend, they always like to have you guys there to consult the regulations, so.
Don't they usually come up here, or have a, didn't they have the thing last year here, or no?
Usually, sometimes they'll do something at the fair.
Oh, okay.
So, Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number eighteen dash sixteen honoring Catherine Blazek of Ambassador Troop seven one three nine four for achieving the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest honor in Girl Scouting. And her. Catherine's Golden, the Golden Award project was creating water collection areas through the use of rain barrels within the Shady Side and Maple Shade Cemeteries in Auburn Township that provides members of the community and maintenance staff with an easy way to care for the plants and flowers. The, with help of volunteers, they installed gravel foundations, gutters, and rain barrels, placed watering cans, and then planted flowers around the beds of the barrel foundations, and developed a brochure to teach people on how to install the rain barrels. Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number eighteen dash seventeen honoring Savannah Fee of Ambassador Troop seven one three nine four and High Adventure Troop seven oh three three four for achieving the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest honor in Girl Scouting. Her project consisted of creating and building an exhibit of sustainable backyard gardening at the Lake Farm Park in Kirtland. Using a shed sheet, developed a display and raised beds to do companion planting, which helps reduce the carbon footprint and promotes healthier eating. Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number eighteen dash eighteen honoring Cadet Troop seven eleven fifty for achieving the Silver Award, the highest honor for a Cadet Girl Scout. And they enhanced both indoor and outdoor recess opportunities at Tillman's Elementary School. They did surveys and created large interchangeable connect four and checkerboards, two cornhole targets, and created a dribble kick and roll game. And because they couldn't be permanently done until the weather got better, they created them on canvas first, so they can use them inside with canvas ones, and then they can use the larger wood ones outside in the playground. And then Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number eighteen dash nineteen honoring Junior Girl Scout Troop seven fourteen ninety for achieving the Bronze Award, the highest honor for a junior girl scout. And they created a kindness campaign through the Keston Schools in the community. They made cookies and delivered them to the Bainbridge Police Safari Departments, as well as creating cars to handle it, hills, and spending time with the residents, along with creating a video that they showed at the Keston Intermediate School, and passed out bookmarks on different schools with positive quotes.
Second?
Commissioner Plaigle?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
When's that date again?
It's February fifth, and Dave's granddaughter is actually a part of the Junior Girl Scout Troop seven fourteen ninety.
Which one is that, Dave?
Last one, that's my youngest one, Madison.
All right.
She's eleven, yeah.
Debbie's daughter?
Yeah, younger one, yeah.
Okay, so the number thirteen is, Commissioner's Requesting the Board Move Into Executive Session for the purpose of considering the employment of a public employee.
Second?
Second?
Commissioner Pfeiffer?
Yep.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Spiller?
Um, Linda and David, myself, and Skip.
You're kidding?
It's quick.
That's huge.
They won't be back. But nothing on them again, or?
I mean, because they're in ourselves?
No, they're just.
Oh, oh, they'll come back.
Oh, yeah, but they're.
No, they're done, they did everything that was on the agenda, so.
They took the company in a different direction. They're gonna be, there might be action at the end, yeah.
I have no idea.
Yeah, right, right. So long as we're officially over, all right, which, for number eleven, which elementary school was that?
Um, they did it at Timmons.
Keston?
Yeah, it's all three, but.
It's all three, oh, oh, so it's.
Timmons is part of the Keston School, that's right. Timmons Elementary School.
Oh, at Timmons, okay.
Yeah, at Timmons Elementary School.
And the location of the February twenty-sixth?
It's at the Timmons Elementary School Gymnasium.
They give a time?
Um, it's at one o'clock.
Thank you.
They have, uh, graduating seniors on, uh, in several of the troops too, so they're gonna honor those as well.
Oh, okay. They got the roof mixed there, the school, didn't they, and Timmons, or whatever it was? Because they're having a big problem with the roof leaking and different things.
No, I don't know.
Well, that was one of the reasons that Kerry Claggett's involved in it, that there was a stake about the roofs, and some of the people, the school teachers were very upset because of the work, they're building a school up in the roofs.